The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everyone to our council meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation indivisible, with liberty and justice in its
Thank you. Call call.
Here.
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 Thank you.
We'll move on to our audience of citizens. So we have three names here. First name is Rachel Rochette.
She's not here.
Good evening. Rachel Rochette, 61 Ellsworth Boulevard. So the past, I guess a couple of weeks ago, week and a half, two weeks ago, there was a prominent national Republican congressman who has been saying things for many years. He had an interview and apparently what he said in that interview crossed the line with the congressional leaders, with the national GOP party. He said things that were very racist and in response they asked for his resignation and they took him off of his committee seats. Unfortunately, in the town of Berlin, we can't say the same thing about our GOP leadership. We have seen a long and storied history of bigoted and hate speech exhibited by members of the Berlin Town Committee, not all Berlin Republicans, but those on the town committee. It started with a Confederate flag flying on Scott Beale's property and him posting it proudly on Facebook and saying that they will never let take this down. Then there was the most recent case of the state representative who was endorsed by the Berlin Republican Town Committee, whose Twitter feed was filled with hate speech. I read those Twitter tweets at a previous meeting, so I won't go back and read those again. Not a single GOP leader condemned those words until it became public. Once it became public, they did not ask him to step down until he had already stepped down. There was also the example of the Republican Town Committee joking about children who were going through mental health issues, laughing at their problems and stating that those kids don't need mental health programs, they need better parenting. So here we are today. We're here today with another example of one of the GOP leaders hate speech. And I'll read what was reported in the paper. Peters can be heard on the tape saying, "No goddamn queers, no goddamn aliens. We got inaudible guys who like to shoot effing blacks." Laughing. What kind of training is that? Like a course you have to take? And then Peters replies, "It's 10 minutes, a 10-minute thing. I teach it." "What do you teach?" asks the anonymous source. "I teach how to shoot effing N-word." I won't say it. There have been three articles about this tape. Not a single GOP member of this council has said a word, condemned those words, said that is not who Berlin is, that is not what we represent. In fact, the mayor was quoted as saying, "No comment, we have to see how this plays out." I think it's pretty clear, when you have a taped audio recording of one of your leaders in the GOP party saying these words, you don't need to let it play out. I would have come and asked for all of you to ask for his resignation today. He resigned. I didn't see an apology in the resignation, but I ask all of you to condemn this type of language. This is not what Berlin stands for. It might be what the GOP Town Committee stands for, but it's not what Berlin stands for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next person up, Terry Tanino.
Rochelle, you were talking about the Republicans. What about the Democrats? When Ms. Stetson got arrested for her DUI.
Oh, come on.
What did you do?
Isn't she supposed to state her opinion?
And what did you do when you had signs? She had signs.
Terry, just talk to us.
When you had signs and you went down through Washington with all this vulgarity of these posters, you were on the Board of Ed. And you were on a town council and you have the right to talk like that? I don't think so. You should have known better and you should have resigned. Instead of asking Bob Peters to resign, you should have resigned. I have a phone call today from a lawyer who said the Federal Wiretap Act is 18USD 2511. It is illegal to secretly record an oral telephone or electronic communication that other parties to communication reasonably expect to be private. Well, that's what went on in my shop. And it was illegal and a lot of people are going to be in trouble for it. Thank you very much for your time. See ya. Don't get better.
Paul Esch.
Counsel, audience, and this is Paul Esch. Mr. Peters is not a racist. In fact, when he was chairman of the commission, he was the first one to say, "We need more minorities on the force." What did we do? We hired a black person to Hispanics that successfully competed all the requirements that we have to have for the police department. It's pretty thorough. Mr. Peters is on the Berlin J.C.'s. This is back in the paper already, but I'm going to reiterate it. He was president of the Berlin Lions Club, a police sergeant, mayor, and a state rep. I have never heard anyone complain in foul language such as alleged. I haven't. In fact, Ms. Rosso said that he worked with Mr. Peters in Hartford. He never heard Bob say anything like that. Thank you, Mr. Rosso. The taping was wrong to do. Who would do something like that? Without a person knowing he was being taped and not be a man or a woman enough to stand up and explain why he should have did that. I believe that that is Mr. Peters' voice, is not Mr. Peters' voice on a garbled tape. And I believe it was a voice of a garbled tape and unintentionally discredit a man who gave many years, honorable years, to the town of Berlin. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, next. Yes, you're next. Yes, no, no other signups, so we're all set.
Hi, Kristen Campanelli, 56 Hummingbird Drive. I'm one of those GD queers. I'm here to tell you guys that I'm offended. I served on this council. I served on the Board of Ed for six years. I've also given my time to this community and I think that those comments were disgusting. For somebody to come up here and say that this person's not a racist and use those words, if they didn't do that, why resign? Why? No explanation? Didn't want to fight? Come on now. Come on. I don't believe it and neither should any of you. What I would really like is for you guys, all of you, all seven of you, to vote to implement some training for all of our elected and appointed officials. I'd like that training to include sensitivity training and topics of implicit bias. I want everybody here to know that Berlin is not a racist community. We need to do something. This is now like the fourth or fifth news article that's come out in the past like four years regarding someone waving a Confederate flag, using the N-word. Our community looks bad. You are our community's leaders. All right? I have people from other towns sending me articles about our town, asking me what is going on in Berlin. That's an embarrassment. You should all be embarrassed. I am. We need to do something. I don't care what team you're on, what party you're in, just do something. This is ridiculous. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
Seem lullaby, they all seem to get hit free real road. First thing I'd like to say tonight, I'd like to thank the Berlin Police Department for the hard work and service they do to our town. We know that, we know as town people that races never factor when the police respond to a 911 call or any other emergencies, accidents on the Berlin Turnpike. We also know that being a police officer is possibly the most dangerous job you could ever have, but also a rewarding job because they do help a lot of people. So I want to thank each one of them for their service. But secondly, I want to set some light on what has transpired in the newspaper regarding this hateful comment and personal destruction for the past few weeks. The comments of Mr. Peters were referred to the town of Berlin. And I hope he can reflect on what he said and can apologize to the police department and the people of Berlin. But unfortunately, these comments have become a norm for the majority party. As I've stated several times in my letters to the editor, this party has successfully divided the town just to gain power. And I'm going to state some examples which are very difficult to hear, but they need to be shared because our town needs to heal and our town needs to stop pinning one group against another group. First, during the budget process, Ann Riley decided to weaponize the budget with the Axatax people. Those signs, we on the Board of Finances found offensive. They had an ax and in today's day and age, some crazy person might think that axes means violence and those signs should never have been put. Also, the postings that some of these people of Axatax people, and they were, some were part of the Town Committee because I know some of them were, they decided that they were going to call us all different types of names. They called us scumbags, they called us dirtbags, and they called us other names that I would never use in public. The Axatax people even went after our families. Quote, "Why don't you move your and your scumbag family out of Berlin and raise taxes somewhere else?" That's what they said and that's offensive. When I was in the Board of Finance years ago, we never had stuff like that said. We never had a party chair that got involved. We have Arthur Powers sitting right here in the audience. He was possibly, I think, the longest-serving mayor of our town. He worked with both parties to get things done. There wasn't any offensive language done at the time. He did the golf course, he did Sage Park. Can you imagine that doing now? Ann Riley would get people against Sage Park in the golf course, but Arthur did it because he worked together and he understood how good government worked. And maybe, maybe the council and the mayor should understand that. Good government is not to listen to a party chair. Good government is to work with all types of people and doesn't matter if you're an independent, unaffiliated Democrat or Republican, you should work together. Second thing, during the campaign against the House Speaker Joe, Ann Riley decided to nominate a white supremacist. We all knew he was a white supremacist. Just look at Facebook, the day he got nominated. I said to myself, "Oh my God, I can't believe they nominated this man." He didn't like anybody. He didn't like African-Americans, he didn't like gay, lesbian, he didn't like anybody. I don't know if he liked himself, but Ann Riley endorsed him. I was the only member on the Board of Finances to ask him to resign. Nobody else on the council or anybody asked him to resign. A matter of fact, some councilmen wrote letters of support knowing that he was a racist or a white supremacist. This type of leadership has caused Berlin an embarrassment to the town of people and it's set in a bad example to the kids in our schools. I mean, whatever we do, these kids look up to us. They look up to the mayor, they look up to every councilperson, anybody that serves in town government. We've got to stop this racial stuff. We've got to stop it. And we've got to watch what we say and we've got to tell people like Ann Riley, enough is enough. You can't just achieve power and divide people and insult people. I saw in the newspaper that we're having trouble getting people on boards of commissions. Why would somebody even want to be part of a board of commissioners? Because if you disagree to Ann Riley, she'll have her Axatax people, whoever they are, come after you and they're going to come after you and your family. It's got to stop. I mean, my wife asked me a few weeks ago, "Why are you even on the Board of Finances? These people are vicious." I said, "Well, I want to try to do what's good for the community and we've got to ignore them." So we've got to stop and we've got to set an example and we've got to work together, all of us. We've got to set aside whatever party we are or whatever. We've got to work together to make this town move forward. And Mr. Mayor, we've got to show some leadership. We've got to tell Ann Riley enough is enough. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes.
Good evening. I'm Gail Lemire, 102 Wildemere Road, and I'm changing topics completely. I'm on the Golf Commission and I'm here this evening to support our recommendation to you for a waiver for the Connecticut section open that we'd like to have at Timberland. We understand that is a request for a waiver on greens fees, but we feel it's to promote the community, to promote the course. There's additional revenue by increasing participation, hopefully, because those folks will play practice rounds, hopefully. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience or citizens? Yes, sir.
Berlin's former police chief, Chief Fitzgerald. Berlin's present police chief, John Klett. All our professional police officers, men, women, including the police dispatchers, do nothing, nothing about the racial remarks ever made. Berlin police are Berlin's finest and always will be. Remember, serve and protect. Thank you to our police department.
Anyone else?
Kate, I'd like to make a statement. I don't know if it's necessary that I get up to the podium.
Sure.
Should I get up or?
No, I mean, if you want to, no, whatever you want to say, go ahead.
First, I'd like to address Ms. Tanina's comments with respect to my DUI. I acknowledged what I did that night and my lapse in judgment was certainly not intentional and nor did it come from a place of malice or hatred. And I paid and I acknowledged those actions, both personally and publicly. With respect to the sign that I carried in Washington, I'd make that sign again and I'd carry it proudly again. And I'd probably make it even bigger and bolder and more colorful. With respect to, with respect to further statement that I have to make, and I think I can speak on behalf of my two Democratic co-counselors. Mr. Peters' words were so horrifying that I don't think that there's a person in this room who could repeat or hear them again without being sickened. His tirade was racist, hateful, threatening, and violent. It targeted African-Americans, the gay community, immigrants. It was verbally abusive and insulting and it instilled fear. And quite frankly, those are all characteristics and attributes of a hate crime. This is a man who was a police commissioner, was to abide by and uphold the Berlin Police Department's mission to enforce the law and to serve the public in a fair and just manner. He has, by his words and actions, displayed everything antithetical to that statement. As a commissioner, he did a grave disservice to our police officers, lead their homes every day with the charge to serve and protect. We are relieved that Mr. Peters resigned today, but dismayed that the VRTC, its chair Ann Riley, and the mayor failed to immediately request his resignation or at the very least ask that he step down while this matter was being investigated. It is past the time for the Berlin Republican Town Committee and Ms. Riley to acknowledge, condemn, and address rather than systematically condone and ignore those who marginalize and demean others with their words and actions. It is time they stop endorsing and supporting those who instill hatred and intolerance. Mr. Peters and the actions or inaction of the Berlin Republican Town Committee are stain on the town of Berlin and not representative of its residents or its police force. Thank you.
I would just like to say that, of course, we do not condone in Berlin any bigotry, any prejudice against anyone. And we know that applies equally to the officers of our police department. You know, when the newspaper article first came out, it's a newspaper article. And unfortunately, I've had the experience of dealing with the press and dealing with law enforcement issues and we had, I guess, a supposed audio, at least what the paper said, and they had an audio of someone. It may have been Bob, may have not been at that time. But, you know, to go with the newspaper article initially, not knowing the source and not knowing where it came from, to convict somebody and that's a little disturbing. The man has resigned, we know that. And of course, we don't condone any of those statements if in fact they did come from him and they are true. They are his statements. To this day, we don't know that, though, do we?
Why did he resign?
Because he said.
I don't, I don't have an answer for, I don't have an answer why the man resigned. That's up to the man. But if we start convicting people on newspaper articles and about recordings, then that's where society is headed. But to say that now, I understand, he resigned. And then really to go into any more, I don't really see a need, other than we all know, we don't condone any speech like that. We never have. Republicans, Democrats, grew up in Berlin, come on. We do not condone that. And that's one person, whoever it was, if it was Bob, if it was someone else, said in a semi-private setting, very offensive, understandably, but that does not reflect the people of Berlin, and I think we all know that. As much as you may want to point fingers at this person or that person, that just, that just continues the prejudice, right? That's what it does. Whether you have an R or a D after your name, we'll just continue that prejudice. We're trying to end that. And I think that's how we should move forward. So I just want to say that I, and I, after speaking in caucus with our fellow members on the Republican Party, condemn everything that was said on that tape. And we also condemn bigotry and racism. I also think it's important to know, when I read the newspaper, that the police union came out and I support what the police union said. They, the police does an outstanding job and a couple of people in the audience of citizens said that. And I think that that's not to be confused with their service and I personally support the police department. I know the chief is here. If you could please express to the officers that we still have full faith in them and we can continue to thank them for their service. I think that about answers that. Okay, thank you. Anyone else? We good?
No, I would like to say something as well. Karen Patlero, Still Meadow Lane. When I first heard this, because I didn't read it in the paper, I heard it and then I went to the paper and read it. And then I went home and listened to the tape and it was just horrifying. It's not the way that I was brought up, it's not the way I brought up my children. We live in a wonderful town and we have a fabulous police department who I truly respect and try to honor because of what they do. And I guess we're in a small town, but really, when you get in that police car, you're putting your life on the line. You never know. So I thank them very much. And it's nice to hear your comment, Alex, because it needed to be said. It hadn't been said. And unfortunately, I think it would have been so good to have a statement prepared and sent to the media prior to tonight. Took a little long to get out there. So I do appreciate, though, the fact that you said it. But we have to change. We have to work together. We have to put these horrible racial, bigoted comments aside and work together because every person matters. I don't care if you're black, white, purple, gay, transgender, legal immigrant or, you know, immigrant here legally. People matter. And that's what we need to do, is take care of people and the people of our town.
Thank you. So if you all mean it tonight, I heard a lot of working together. We're open to that as we move forward. So let's move forward in the spirit of cooperation and let's get some things done. We'll see how it goes. I guess we'll have to move forward with that and move on to our meeting agenda. Thank you all for your comments. It's unfortunate, but we will move forward and I think our town will survive and we'll make it a better place. All right, so we'll move on to our consent agenda. We have received our consent agenda, we reviewed everything, and we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Okay, I will make a motion to accept the three items on the consent agenda tonight.
Second on that? Second. All those, any other comments? All those in favor? I oppose. So moved? All right, topic, new business number one? Yes, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. She's down here. Yeah, she's going to come the next meeting.
Okay, agenda item number one is the purchase of, the police department has been awarded a grant and they are seeking requests to have a bidding requirements waived. And Chris Susie is here to discuss this action.
Good evening, thank you. So we received a $10,000 grant through OPM to purchase equipment for our active threat response. The vendor we selected is AAA Police Supply out of Massachusetts. They're on Mass state contract for pricing. And we received a quote for, the equipment comes out, it's about $14,100 and change. And because it exceeds the $10,000 limit, we're looking for a bid waiver and approval of the purchase of the equipment. None of the funds are coming out of our operating budget. It's all through the grant and our drug asset forfeiture accounts. So we've used AAA Police Supply before for other equipment and they're offering the kits that we were looking for.
Okay, chief, thanks. Any questions? Yes, sir.
Are these exterior vests with plates? And I assume they'll be in each cruiser?
Yeah, so there's 16. The kits are basically vests with ceramic body armor to protect against rifle rounds. And they're heavier than the normal bulletproof vests. They're not for everyday wear. They weigh, the plates themselves are about seven pounds. So these would be used in an active threat response and they're in the trunks of the cars and they go on over the officer's regular body armor.
Thank you.
This is my question.
Any other questions? There are none, we'll take a motion.
Okay, move to waive the bidding requirements and approve the purchase of active shooter kits from AAA Police Supply for not to exceed $14,119, since this is in the best interest of the town.
Second. Thank you. Any further comments? There are none, all those in favor? I oppose. So moved.
Agenda item number two is the fee waiver, which was discussed earlier. It's to, they want to have a Connecticut Open Qualifier here, requesting the greens fees be waived in anticipation there will be some cart rental and practice rounds also played. John Zuck is here to discuss the request.
Good evening. CSGA has requested, this Connecticut State Golf Association has requested the use of Timberland Golf Course for the Connecticut Open Qualifier. If this is approved this evening, the event will be held on Monday, July 1st, 2019. Mondays generally are lightest day of play and the event will begin at 7:30 to 12 o'clock, tea times. And... And generally, what we would do for revenue on a Monday is approximately $1,200 to $1,400. The CSGA, again, is requesting the greens fee waiver, which is approximately $3,400. Carts are optional. Through statistics from previous events, the CSGA estimates approximately 40% of the field will use legalized carts. This is also in the agenda item, there's a little breakout of the proposed green fees, $3,200, I'm sorry, and the estimated cart revenue, excuse me, is $760. And also, the players, the CSGA estimates around 40 to 50% of the players will play a practice round before the event. And this will be a full price round. That revenue from that is approximately $1,800. Total estimated revenue for, from this event will be $2,560. So we're looking at a total estimate, total, I mean, sorry, net estimate revenue cost is $640. So after all the other things are added into there, the actual greens fee revenue, we're only down about $640. And what we get for this also is a tremendous amount of publicity through Connecticut Golf Online, and we're also featured on the Connecticut Golf website, Connecticut, CSGA website, and also the Hartford Current and New Britain Herald will be also covering the event. So we get, we do receive tremendous amount of publicity. And one thing I have to add in here is the, in the action, I have Wednesday, July 12, that'll be Monday, July 1, 2019. I apologize for the typo.
Thank you. John?
I have a question. So you say that it creates a lot of publicity. Does it create a lot of business?
I would say if there's people coming from far distances, and if they have a signal, let's say a 7:30 tee time, they potentially will stay in a local hotel. Or people, the remote business for the restaurant, people eating, potentially gas stations, things of that nature. But if you do have an early tee time, if you're two hours away, you really don't want to get up at 5 o'clock in the morning and then have to drive all the way here and then play. And I know with the Connecticut, I'm sorry, with the men's club event, that the men's club had, the Walter Kane event, I'm not sure what time they teed, they teed out pretty early. And what the men's club did is give out local hotels to rent for the evening. So that's something we can do with this also.
Okay, how about business in terms of, does the publicity generate business for the golf club?
Yes, absolutely.
It does?
Absolutely, yes.
And have you figures on that when it's been held in the past?
We really don't have, it would be very difficult to estimate that, just because of, what we do is, when we get the list of, we receive a list of players from the CSGA, and if they play, they'll come up and they'll say, "I'm playing a practice round at Timberland." And we estimate 40 to 50% of those people will play a practice round at full price. Generally, we would not have those people come to Timberland and play a practice round unless they're playing in this event. So it does create publicity, but it's a little bit difficult to put a number on as far as how much additional golf it will generate.
I mean, like after the event?
That's, yeah.
That's what you're...
But just through advertising, if, just by hosting this event, it's a big deal for Timberland. So people will look at it and say, "Wow, this must be, you know, a pretty good golf course," if they're hosting this event there, and they might come and therefore play.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Okay. Move to approve the waiver of greens fees for the Connecticut Open Qualifier to be held at Timberland Golf Course on Monday, July 1, 2019. Estimated fee waiver is $3,200.
Second. Thank you. Further questions or comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thanks, John. Three.
Agenda item number three, this is a request for authorization of town manager to enter into a contract amendment with WMC Consulting Engineers for an updated traffic study. I think as you're aware, that there's, a boulevard was designed to go on the property on Farmington Avenue. You know, that was designed probably three years ago. We need to update the traffic study because there's, with the change, originally it was for the police station, now it's for TOD development, so we need to update the traffic study. Chris Edge is here to discuss the request.
Not sure there's much to ask, to add, Jack pretty much put it as it was. So essentially, looking at both the market rate departments, retail restaurant, again, to see what we might need on Farmington Avenue, they'll work through the numbers, as well as work with DOT, so we're all set to go when and if we move forward with the developer.
Chris, what's the estimated completion date?
For the study?
Yeah.
I believe they were looking at about 30 days for the study, working with DOT is a little bit longer. But the good thing is too, is this, I think, will work well time-wise with working with Newport as well, as we move through.
I have a question for you, Chris. Did we do any of these traffic studies in the past, or is this an updated one, because we have new plans?
It's updated from the last one, when we initially had gotten the monies for the boulevard, when it was going to be kind of undetermined at 89 and then police station, one was done at that point. It's really going to update it with the new numbers, including the new amount of people and traffic every day on the property.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? Hearing none, we'll take a motion.
Okay, move to waive the town's bidding process and to authorize the town manager to enter into a contract amendment with WMC Consulting Engineers for $14,000 from the steep boulevard at Burl and Train Station account to prepare an updated traffic study and an application to the state traffic authority for the boulevard project.
Second on this?
Second.
Thank you. Any further comments? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number four, is authorization for the town manager to enter into a subordination agreement for property at 378-380 Main Street, which is the location of the Box Bistro. Chris is here to discuss the details.
Thank you, Jack. Yes, what had happened was, is the previous owner, Mike Jesky, who ran Jesky's catering, ended up getting a grant through our facade program. The way the program works is a lien for the amount of the grant goes on the property for five years. At the end of the five years, the lien goes away, essentially so that you don't do anything to counteract the monies we put in for the grant. Box Bistro has purchased the property from Mr. Jesky, and essentially what this is doing is the lien is going to continue on the property. We're basically moving down beneath the actual mortgage holder of the bank. So essentially, just giving him the ability to continue, purchase it, but still keep the lien on the town property records.
Okay, any questions?
So when would the, it was for a period of five years, so where are we now? Are we at the four-year mark, or?
We are at the three-year mark, so it'd be, let's see, February 22, 2021 is when the lien would disappear.
Okay, and just from my understanding, and just to let everyone else know, it seems like Box Bistro is doing fantastic, right?
They're doing amazing.
Yeah, I mean, I see people from all over Hartford County going there. I know someone who lives in Simsbury who goes there for their meals. Is that the impression you're getting, too?
Yes, the reasoning that he is, James and his wife are purchasing the property is their capacity to make food where they currently are is not as great as the need has been. So by purchasing this property with existing catering kitchen, given the ability to then expand their facilities, expand their offerings, as well as grow dramatically, so it is, it's very good news for both Burl and for Box Bistro.
Fantastic, fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions? Comments? Take a motion.
Okay, move to authorize the town manager to execute a subordination agreement with the respect to the statutory form mortgage deed and the original principal amount of $2,581.15 in favor of the town of Burl and executed February 17, 2016, and recorded February 23, 2016, in volume 720, page 939 of the Burl and Land Records, subject to the review and approval of the Corporation Council.
Second on that?
Second.
Thank you. For the questions or comments for Chris?
This is congratulations, trying to hook up a vacant property with a like-need customer and make sure it's not vacant anymore.
All right, hearing none of the comments, we'll take a motion.
You did that.
No. Not this one, did we do this one?
Yes, I did.
Oh, all right, so we vote on it?
Yeah.
All right, let's vote. All those in favor? All those in favor? I thought I missed that, too.
I interrupted.
That's all right, that's all right. Any opposed? All right, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Agenda item number five, this is for approving a budget transfer, $60,000 for Raleigh Street account, for Elton Road instrumentation account. At the last meeting, you approved the bid waiver. Unfortunately, the way, we didn't approve the transfer at the same time, so we're, this is to follow up and just requesting approval of the transfer of funds so that the project can be done.
All right, thank you.
And Ray, unfortunately, is at the Water Control Commission meeting, so he can't be here.
All right, any questions on this one? Hearing none, all is in favor, or make a motion?
Move to approve a budget transfer of $60,000 from the Raleigh Street account to the Elton Road instrumentation account, so that the previous awarded bid waiver for the design and construction oversight of the instrumental upgrade at Elton Road Well Field can be initiated.
Second. Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number six, this is a, something we need to do every two years, and that is appoint, they say citation, excuse me, a citation hearing officer. Currently, John Paul Demko serves as the hearing officer. He did work with us on the Elton Road Blight Project. He does meet with Maureen on a periodic basis. I think he's very quick to react, so I'm requesting that you confirm John Paul Demko, 63 Old Wood Road in Burl, to another two-year cycle as a town citation hearing officer. Easy enough.
Make a motion.
Okay, confirmation of the town manager's appointment of John Paul Demko, 63 Old Wood Road, Burl, to serve a two-year term as the town citation hearing officer from February 1, 2019, to January 31, 2021.
Second on that? Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Agenda item number seven is an amendment to the town council meeting schedule, and actually, this was prepared by Kate. And this is just to, I believe we've talked about how we want to rearrange the schedule for time in November, December, and also that you wanted, we've agreed to hold two meetings at the senior center, and so that's in this motion also.
Okay. Obviously about Tuesdays, right? Obviously, Tuesdays.
Right. Okay, well, these are all on Tuesdays, we just modified the dates. And I will tell you, since I, since we talked last time, I have, I had another one of my sessions at the senior center. There are no filters there, I can tell you that. And they are very, I will tell you, they are generally very excited about having the council come up and give two meetings up there, so I appreciate you doing that. All right. I move to amend the town council meeting schedule by changing the location and the time of the Tuesday, April 2, and Tuesday, October 1 meetings to the senior center at 1:30 PM, and also to add a meeting on October 29, and November 19, and to cancel the meeting on November 12.
Second. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All right, so we'll get through a few appointments, may not be a mall tonight, still waiting on some other applications, but I want to start with Memorial Library.
Okay. What a roll, huh?
Yeah, so if we...
Hi, hi.
Huh, are we prepared? We won't do everyone tonight, but we'll get through a bunch that, hopefully, whatever we can get through here. So, all right, so I'm just following this colored sheet here, Kate, all right? That's the best one we have, right, I think?
Whatever.
We'll fix it if it's wrong, it's okay.
Yep.
So...
Library board, I will nominate Bob Lewis.
All right, thank you. Many other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, and all is in favor of Robert Lewis?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so, welcome. Robert? Nomination for...
Next putt, I will nominate Kathleen Murray.
Okay.
For the library board.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, and vote on, it's Murray. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And...
Next position, I will, for the library board again, I'll nominate Lisa Bush.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, and vote on Lisa Bush. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Skip ethics for now, if we could. Cemetery committee. So, what do we have now?
Well, we've got, I think we got three people.
We three? Three and three?
Two, but we have a second, we could...
What do we have?
Cemetery commission, it looks like...
Two, right?
There's two new ones.
And one reappointment?
Would be reappointed.
Okay.
The only thing is you have to move him up to the agency.
Okay.
So...
All right.
Hold on, I'm sorry, keep him right where he is, excuse me. So on the cemetery committee, number seven?
Yep.
You can either do Charles or Edward, and on number eight, the other person, and on number nine, Steve would be a reappointment.
Okay, so let's go ahead and, I guess we can make seven, you know, Charles.
Yeah, nominate Charlie Coloresi.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, all is in favor of Charles?
Aye.
Great, would be nominate, right? Nominate.
Edward Wright, yeah, I'll nominate Ed Horncole Jr.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Close the nominations. All those in favor of Edward?
Aye.
Thank you. Number nine, Steve.
Yes, I will nominate for Cemetery Commission Stephen Biola Jr.
Thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, who's in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Central Regional Tourism District, nobody.
Number 12.
Number 12, for the aging, we'd like to be a point. Okay, so number 12?
Okay, I will re-nominate Frank Solgeras for the Commission on Aging.
Thank you. Any further nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor, Frank?
Aye.
Thirteen.
Okay, for the Commission on Aging, again, I will nominate Louis Mustonowski.
Lois?
Lois. Lois, I'm sorry. Thank you.
For correcting me.
Other, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor, Lois?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, Commission Disabilities for Persons with Disabilities. Nominate.
Oh, number 14?
Yes.
Nominate Nancy Luddy for Commission for Persons with Disabilities.
Thank you very much. Any further nominations? Hearing none, all is in, close the nominations, all is in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
Conservation Commission. Yeah, we reappointed.
Nominate Guy Hoffman for the Conservation Commission, can have a talk.
Okay, thank you. Any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor of Guy?
Aye.
Lisa doesn't want to be, it's a matter of Karen, she had enough already? Come on. Huh? Huh? Did Lisa have enough?
Yeah.
She had enough already? Come on.
Yeah, I'm totally embarrassed.
It couldn't have been that bad, no, it's all right. Maybe it was, I don't know.
She really had some tough times in the garden.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay, God bless her then, okay, that's good. All right, so we'll look for somebody there, we got other, I can see, is nobody else there? Okay. Am I all up on the constable, too? Just, maybe that guy, talk to him, and just, what do we have? How many constable positions are there?
There are two open.
Two, but how many are there total? Six?
Seven or so.
Six total?
Or seven?
Seven.
There's seven total, right? So we still have four.
Usually they run concurrent with your term, so...
Okay, but one resigned.
Reappointed.
Right.
It's been open since November, and then the other one was resident.
Alright, I'll, uh, what's, what's happening? Alright, we'll, we'll just, just hold off on that for a moment, um, if we could hold off, because we have nobody yet, um, but there are some people that are interested in economic development, so we'll hold off on that too, and then obviously, one, Michael doesn't want to be reappointed, so we'll, we'll, uh, off on that, moving on to the Golf Commission.
Okay, first spot here, I will nominate Gail Lemieux.
Thank you, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor of Gail?
Aye.
And number 24 is the Golf Commission.
Golf Commission, again, I will nominate Sebastian Senia.
Thank you, any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, congratulations to the Golf Commission, and I do see some Golf Commission members here, so, um, you know, thank you guys for all your hard work, I know you, you know, having been to one of those meetings recently, it went on forever, so I certainly commend you for the time you're putting in, and I know you've been, uh, turning the golf course around, so that's, uh, that's great, so we appreciate it, and good luck down the road, keep it up. Okay, Historic District Commission, Lorraine Stubbs.
Okay, I will nominate Lorraine Stubbs for the Historic District Commission.
Thank you, any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Lorraine?
Aye.
Aye. What would we do without her, alright? She is, she pushes that district to the end, which is great. Inland Wetlands, so what do we got here?
Okay, the problem with inland wetlands, Mayor, is that... You have to fill that vacancy first.
Okay.
The other three members would like to be reappointed.
Okay.
So you just have to decide which one is going to be a shorter term than they would be.
So, so, if, alright, so...
So 26 needs to be filled first.
And that could be with who? Anybody, or?
Could be with any of the, um...
D or U?
A D or U?
Very complicated.
R or U?
D, a D R U, or any?
There's only one U.
There's only one U, right? So you, so...
Number 28?
Yeah, so we'll, we'll put, yeah, go ahead and we'll put John...
Okay, I will nominate John Zeratini.
Yeah. Thank you, any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, close the nominations, all in favor, all those in favor of John?
Aye.
Close, so moved. And 27?
I will nominate Gary Povano for inland wetlands, Water Course Commission.
Thank you very much, any other, any other nominations? Hearing none, close the nominations, all those in favor of Gary?
Aye.
Thank you, and we'll, obviously, so 29?
Yep, and the last one would be, uh...
David Rogan.
David Rogan, sorry.
And 28?
28?
Yes.
Oh, he's moving up right, I'm sorry, yeah, he's moving, so, thank you, any other nominations? Hearing none, close the nominations, all those in favor of David?
Aye.
Okay, so inland wetlands, Park and Rock, what have we got? Does not want to be, right? Does not want to be, okay, so, oh, we have one, that's right.
We do have one.
So, she could go, uh, anywhere, 32, or no?
Mr. Patat would go on, yes, number 32.
32, okay.
Okay, I'll nominate Dinesh Patel.
Thank you, uh, any further nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor of Dinesh Patel?
Aye.
I'm zoning, I'd like to hold off on that, I have a couple other people that are still interested. Public Building Commission, what do we have?
Okay.
So, okay, so we got two for two, okay?
PBC, I will nominate Thomas Reed.
Thank you, any other nominations? Hearing none, close the nominations, all, all those in favor of Thomas?
Aye.
And 41?
Okay, I will nominate for PBC again, Thomas Salamino.
Alright, thank you, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor of Thomas?
Aye.
Okay, Veterans Commission, we've got more people than we have, but these two want to be reappointed.
Popular Commission.
Popular, yeah, they do a heck of a job. Alright, so, we'll just, we'll nominate for 42?
I'll just renominate Joe Cassel.
Thank you, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor of Joe?
Aye.
Thank you, 43.
And I will nominate Richard Rampone.
Alright, thank you, uh, any other nominations? Can he fill that position?
Punish?
Can only be...
Yes, Richard wants to be reappointed, and he can't.
And he only fill with a R?
The above, oh, with a D, yeah.
Oh.
So he can't be.
But, no, he's already on.
I know, but it's...
Joseph is a U.
Yeah, so he can be on.
What's that say?
Castle is a U.
It says D, R, or U.
He'll be filled...
He'll be filled with a R or U.
Above appointment.
If the above appointment is D, and must as name is a U.
But he's not, Joseph and Richard are both currently on the Veterans Commission.
But I know what you're saying.
Mr. Castle is unaffiliated.
Yeah, I, I, no, but, but I mean, what you, what I see what he's saying, but yeah, I see what he's saying, if you read 43, it doesn't read that way, I mean, I hope we can get by it, but if, you know, figure it out if we can't.
We're gonna, we gotta balance on...
That's what, yeah, see what it reads, Kate, see what it says, can only be filled with an R or U of the above appointment. Oh, well, well, alright, maybe we're reading it, we're reading it the reverse, maybe, huh?
No, I don't think so.
No, can be, can be only be filled with R or U if it...
We didn't put a D up there, so...
I think it said, I don't think it said...
It can be, um...
Either one?
He's not a D, he's a U, he's unaffiliated.
We didn't write D there, so we can do...
This one could be an R, D.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I see, we're, we're reading it the reverse, right? Yeah, Peter and I, well, we're all, you know, right.
Did I say that wrong?
I mean, I read it...
No, it's not a D, we were supposed to put a D here.
No, it's, but, we're reading it reverse, Peter, I think.
No, not what I'm reading. Uh, Your Honor, you got any comment on this?
I think you're wrong. I understand the way you're reading it.
I kind of finally got it too, but it took me a while, sorry.
I, I understood the limitation applied if the prior position was filled with a D, and since the prior position wasn't filled with a D, it's wide open.
Yeah, okay, yeah, right, we're reading it the reverse of what it says, yeah.
What the thought would have been?
Yeah, yeah, exactly. They're trying to trick us, Peter, they're trying to trick us.
It's not hard to do, I'll tell you. But I'll, 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 good thing to my counsel, yeah, yeah.
Not to make this prolong too much, but you reminded me of an old, old SNL skit with Ed Asner, when he was retiring, and he told the guys in a nuclear power plant, you can never put too much water in the reactor, so then they show him on a beach having a, you know, a cocktail, and alarms go off, and they see the two guys scrambling, and they couldn't remember, can you, you know, never put too much water in there, or you could put as much water as you want, and then, and then you see the mushroom pop, and so, those guys, you can never put too much water in there, it's the same thing, I mean.
Counselor Ross, so, what would have happened is if number 42, if you did not reappoint Mr. Castle, and you put in a Democrat, then, um, it would have been where 43 could have only been an R or U, but by reappointing the same people, they're fitting in with the, the way that the commission should be filling minority representation.
Okay.
So it was, um, it was just in case you didn't reappoint the same people. Okay.
Alright.
Sorry about that.
Oh, Michael.
No, it's a good question.
I was with you for a while, I was with you the same way.
I said, wait a minute, this, yeah, I bailed though, I bailed finally.
Did he actually get voted on yet?
No, we have to vote, no, so we, we've, we've straightened that out, we have, no, we're, we're still waiting, we're almost there, Karen, so, we have, we have, Richard Rampone was nominated, correct? Did we nominate him?
Yes.
Yes, we did, okay, and we closed the nominations, and we have no further nominations, so all those in favor of Richard?
Aye.
Okay, so move on. So V and A, we do have a bunch of vacancies, we do have some people that I think may be coming, but, so tonight, we have one lady that's interested? Reappointment, that's, uh, right, right, two people, yes. Uh, V and A, V and A, and we'll, we'll bring in, there's some more people that have spoken to me, they didn't get their apps in, but we'll see, so, anyway, but we have two, so, five.
You can fill, um...
What do we do, yeah, what do we do with, so Mr. Vernis?
Both 44 and 45 are vacancies.
Okay.
We'll start there.
So we start there?
Okay.
44.
First one, I'll nominate David Vernis.
Okay, thank you, any other nominations? Hearing none, we'll close the nominations, all those in favor of David?
Aye.
And, so...
Number two, on the next one down?
45, right.
I'll nominate Cindy McKinnon.
Thank you, uh, any other, excuse me, any other further nominations? Hearing none, close the nominations, all, all those in favor of Cindy?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so Water Commission, oh my god, here, so we have, so these, just all three reappointments, right, Kate, do we have to change anything?
No.
We're good?
We can just go with 52, um, Mr. Fairwood if you want, and...
Let's go down the line there, they all fit, okay.
We'll nominate for number 52 there, Barry Fairwood.
Thank you, uh, any other, any, uh, further nominations for that spot? Hearing none, close the nominations, all those in favor of Barry?
Aye.
Uh, 53?
Okay, I'll nominate Ovaro Garcia Jr.
Okay, thank you, any further nominations for that spot? Hearing none, close the nominations, all those in favor of Ovaro?
Aye.
Aye. 54.
I'll nominate Thomas Lasker.
Thank you very much, any further nominations for that position? Hearing none, all those in favor of Thomas?
Aye.
And, we can put, yeah, so, we have...
I'll nominate Stephen Biella Jr. as alternate to the Water Control Commission.
Thank you, any further nominations for that position? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
And that's another, that's moving on to 57, alright? So, for that spot, it would be Kate?
Yes.
Okay, we can do that, so, alright.
I will nominate Theodore Fueini.
Alright, thank you, any further nominations for that spot? Hearing none, close the nominations, all those in favor of Theodore?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, so moved. It's not going to be reappointed, there's, we have somebody extra?
Have a reappointment, oh, we...
Oh, another, okay, more reappointments, yes, right.
She is the Youth Agency.
Okay.
Representative, so we'll skip 58, right?
Yes.
So, number 59, Youth Services Advisory Board, the Youth Agency Representative, I'll nominate Donna Veach.
Thank you, any further nominations? Hearing none, uh, close the nominations, all those, all those in favor of Donna?
Aye.
Opposed? Congratulations to Donna, and 60?
Okay, number 60, the school representative, I will nominate Jan Zagorski.
Thank you very much, uh, any further nominations for that position? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and close the nominations, and vote for Jan. Aye?
Aye.
Sorry. Alright, zoning board of appeals?
ZBA, I will nominate Lenny Tubbs.
Okay, thank you, any further nominations for that position? Hearing none, close the nominations, all those in favor of Lenny?
Aye.
Aye. And 62?
I will re-nominate Christine Mazada for the alternate spot, the ZBA.
Thank you very much, any other nominations for that spot? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, we have a few left, but we got a lot done, that's good. Wow.
Well, good. Thanks, Karen, for the spreadsheet format.
You're welcome.
Alright, so, where we at now? We got Town Manager Report, don't we?
Town Manager Report, that's where we're at.
There we go. Alright.
In an effort to give you more paper, I did write to, give you a written manager report this, this meeting. First thing on the report is the storm that just went by, I just thought that you'd want to, we, we came through the, the storm fairly well, no major hiccups, uh, they did go work through this, they did work through the storm and try to maintain the roads, we did, we did get a few calls, mailboxes, curbing, things like that, which we do, we normally get, nothing that's not unusual, um, electric power, we, we monitored, Matt Hodish and I, myself, were monitoring EverSource's website, and at the most, at any one time, we had 40 residents without power, which is compared to some places in town, in this state very well, as of, I checked the last time, 2 o'clock today, we had less than five outages in town, so, we, we did not open emergency shelters, we didn't reach that threshold, we didn't, we didn't have any requests, so we didn't open any shelters. I've attached a copy of an email from CCM, um, we, we got a request from CCM last week, and I, it's interesting, I talked to Kevin Delaney a day before I got the email from CCM, uh, about, uh, federal government employees who currently are out of work due to the shutdown, and if there was a possibility of delaying, or putting in a program such that they could wait to pay their taxes, their taxes, which are due at the end of January. Interestingly, the next day, we got a, a letter from CCM, excuse me, CCM, requesting the town, uh, call them and, and say they would support that, um, I didn't feel comfortable that without coming to the council, we should do that, and the other part, I was thinking that instead of saying we would definitely, um, support whatever the state did, that we would wait to see, but I would ask for the concurrence of the, of the town council, that we would voice, that we would support a program, depending on what the state put into place. As of today, um, now, I've included some information on there, as of today, this afternoon, Kate provided me with a, a House pass, a bill HB 5765, which would allow for a, a program to be implemented, and I understand from Attorney De Nofrio, that he, he had additional information prior to coming to the meeting, that, uh, the Senate also passed a similar. So I'm asking for your concurrence to at least, uh, get that information and bring it to you at the next meeting, to see if the town, we'll, we'll try to discern how much it's going to impact the town, and ask for your concurrence that we would bring that to you, and, and you could vote to, uh, implement a, a, a program or, or not at the next council meeting.
Yeah, I, I would be in favor of that. I can just, you, probably be to waive the interest on the...
I, uh, no.
It's deferral, it's deferral until the affected employee resumes employment, and they have 60 days, they have 60 days to pay the taxes, there's no interest during, during
the period that they're out of work.
I'd be fine with that, but I've read that there's strict regulations, federal regulations about giving any federal employee gratuity, I've been on jobs with federal inspectors, you couldn't even buy them a cup of coffee, to make sure we don't violate any federal law by doing that.
I don't know if that would, or not. I think they're just getting along, I don't think that would, I mean, I guess you're giving them pre-aid rate, interest deferred.
In this case.
I don't know.
Well, we'd only, we'd only do whatever the state...
I'm sure the state won't come up with it.
...program, whatever they enacted, but I thought about this, I thought it would, myself, I thought it was something I should bring to the council, I thought it would be a good thing. I don't know how many employees, federal employees, we have living in town, it may not be that many, but I thought it's something that would at least show support for our residents who are currently out of work. So if you have your concurrence, I'll bring it to the next meeting.
I would concur.
Yes.
All right, just as an update, and item C is the budget process has begun, each of the departments have come before, Kevin Delaney and myself, where we've gone through the first cut, if you will, we've sat down, talked with each department, and understanding their, their information, and what their reasons for what they're, what they're requesting. My budget's, my budget's due to the Board of Finance by March first, we're going to continue to have meetings to discuss, you know, level of budget, what, you know, where our priorities are, and what we can do to bring the budget in at a certain, you know, we don't have, we don't, at this point, I don't know that we have a specific goal, but we, we have a number in mind, we are, we are going to, we are going to try to work out a, a meeting, so that we can have a meeting with, between the mayor, and also the head of the Board of Finance, to just have a discussion about, about that, if we can, if we can set that up, arrange that. I welcome any input, but we are, you know, it's, our budget goes to the Board of Finance on March first, and after that, we'll start the meetings to go through, you know, each line, each line item, so, okay? Any kind of, the contract for the community center, I just want to give you an update on it, it, we received, we have received the contract, I've gotten some info back that said we're delaying it, we're, we're not delaying it, we received it, there was some verbiage in there that we had on this side of the town, it's gone to Jeff, we did, Attorney De Nofrio, we just, there's some wording in there we just don't agree with, we sent it back to the Department of Mental Health and Addiction Services, who are the agency who sent it to us, and we're just waiting for them to respond to us, it was a redline copy that went back to them. My understanding is, your granting of authority for me to sign it expires after, I guess, thirty days, and so, but when, we're going to hold off till we get it back, and then we'll come before you again, and request that you approve my, you mean, the authority to sign the contract. It's, we're not delaying it, it's just we're waiting for that, those changes. Next thing, Chris Edg and I met with Saroytul and Fisher Precision Spindles, one of the things with the, Chris, I'm trying to work with Chris Edg, is similar to when we meet with the senior centers, we're trying to go out and meet with one or two businesses every couple of weeks, and we started with, with something that was fun for me, with Saroytul and Fisher Precision Spindles, because there's, you know, things that are manufacturing based, and it was sort of fun walking around, looking at them, making, making parts. It was interesting to talk to them, the main thing they wanted to tell me and Chris is that they just, right now, are having difficulty hiring qualified staff, you know, they're working with the technical schools, they're working with the colleges, but they just can't get enough staff. Saroytul said, you know, they, they, they're looking to add people, and they just, at this point, are unable to get the number of people that they need. But it was, it was really good to see two, two industries in town who are looking to expand, and looking to, you know, who are having good business, and looking for people, so. And we're going to continue that, so every few weeks, we're going to, we're going to try to go to a couple of new businesses in town, just to talk with them, we're trying to express, you know, we're glad they're here, and see if there's anything specifically that the town can do to help them too.
Has there been any interaction with the high school?
I believe there was previously, and that's something, I know Chris, Chris has been, and unfortunately, he left before we had a chance to get this, he's been trying to engage the, the high schools and also the community colleges, to see if we can't, he's trying to get people, a group of people to get together, to put a technical center where they do the training, and training for people specifically for manufacturing.
Yeah, I was on the EDC, it's something that we had discussed a couple of years ago, so I think it's kind of helping maybe that kind of issue at least.
I believe there has been contact, I know that one of the, one of the businesses isn't, is, has a lot of contact with Vital Tech, they're hiring people, I'd like, it's interesting, there's a gentleman, he was eighty-three years old, who was, who's still working, he's training young people on how to be machinists and things, so, it's, it was fun watching, and interesting talking with him. The next one is the cleanup of seventy-seven Elm Road, I don't know if you've been by, it's, there's a, there's a lot, a lot of work has been done, actually, the house is now exposed, and it's not too bad looking, I would, you know, we have removed a lot of trees, the debris, we've gone as far as we can go with the, with the money that you've allocated, and really, it's a, it's a good spot to stop at this point of the, of the year. In the spring, the way that the, the way that the agreement was written, the owner is responsible for starting to maintain, mow the grass and things like that, if they don't, then we'll, we'll have to step in and continue and do that. I did talk to Kevin Delaney today, Kevin Delaney, once he gets the itemized bills, there will be a lien placed on the property in the amount that we expended to date. And as a follow-up to that, I am responsible for a Blade report to you, at the next town council meeting, I'll have a Blade report, I've gone per what's required in the ordinance, I have requested from all the department heads, a lot of information on any blighted properties in town, we'll, we'll put that together, Maureen Juicedy and myself will put that together, and bring it to the town council at the next meeting.
Will that include like, the condition that the, the property's in?
Yeah.
Or photographs or anything?
Yeah, it'll be, it'll be, it will just be a spreadsheet, there'll be information on each one.
Okay, good.
At this point, I haven't got, I probably only have two or three that have been returned to me by the staff, so, I know that in the past, town councils have sent me ones that they're, and we've gone out, we've enacted some, some enforcement action on those, but right to date, I think I've got two or three that they've sent to me. The library, just as an update, the library is continuing to grant allocation for the Community Foundation, to the Community Foundation of New Britain for a social worker, I'm bringing, we're bringing that to you, because our partner, Sutherlandton, has opted out of that, out of that agreement, we made a decision to continue on, it doesn't, it has no more of a commitment than we had before, we felt it's an important, an important grant to obtain, we do, the library has changed, the services we provide haven't changed, the clientele has changed, and it's used by a lot of different people, and some of, and some of the people who go there now are presenting problems for the staff, we're not, we're not fully trained in handling some of the issues that come up today. So I, Helen and I have talked about this, we feel it's a grant that's, it's needed, it's going to provide us with good training and help, and there's no obligation on town to continue once the grant is over, so we, we feel it's important, so we're going to continue with the grant, and see where it goes, well, hopefully we'll get it, and we can, we can do the training. The Facilities Department met with, the Facilities Department is going to secure the former Knights of Columbus building, it's causing us some issues, we're getting, we've gotten some complaints from, from neighbors, saying that, that it's dilapidated, that there's some graffiti on it, and also that, you know, there's, there's people there, so we're going to secure it. Some of the work we can do ourselves with our own facility staff, some of it on the upper floor we cannot, so Doug Solik has gotten some prices, it's, we have some money available in his budget to secure the building, so we'll be securing the building in the next couple of days. The bid for the jail cell project is an, is an update, will be open next, next Monday, and we're hoping to see where those come in, if they come in on budget, we'll be, we'll be doing that work. As, I think, you know, one of our partners on that did, did pull out on us, so we're, but there are two communities working on that, to get that done. The PBC is going to hold a special meeting to discuss the facilities report, discussing the downstairs, the first floor conversion of this town hall to a police station, and they are tentatively planning to come before the town council on February fourteenth to give a, to give a report. The school festival project is on schedule to begin in April at Willard School, and the other schools are scheduled to be, to be completed in the summer, we're doing, and as I told you before, the Willard is being done, because it's used during the summertime, we can't close all schools at one time, so we're going to do Willard in the spring, and then we'll do the other, the other schools in the summer. The town hall project is progressing, actually, it's interesting, it's sort of taking on its, a different life than what I originally intended, I originally intended him for to paint the walls, because it just looked like it was getting dingy, if you will. After that, we've, we've, we've had some changes downstairs, the health district is moving out, talked with some of the staff, we felt that it was, we're going to use, we're planning on using that health district, health district office as another meeting room, we have, we're shy of meeting rooms, so we're going to have, make that to a meeting room, also a training center. Steve Wasnia, who does our, is our, Far Marshall, but also does our risk management, he needs a place to be able to do some training, online training, that will help us get our, meet our need, our requirements of training of our employees, so we're going to put an online training, equipment in there, so that we can do some training in that office also. We're looking at doing some more refurbishing of the ritonda in the spring, the exterior doors will be changed in April and May, as you know, I think, we talked about those exterior doors for a long time, they're going to go electronic locks on them, we're also decided to expand the service, so that all the doors will now be power assist, that means if somebody comes up who's handicapped, they can come in any one of the front doors, that's a request that we've gotten from our residents. We also are changing the signs, it seems like a small thing, but the signs that are on all the offices, in the past, they were just small signs, we're, we're making those ADA compliant, so that they meet all our ADA requirements. We also met today, we're looking at possibility of modifying a couple of the bathrooms to make them ADA compliant, we have, we have bathrooms identified as ADA compliant, or ADA bathrooms, they, they do not meet all the requirements, we feel that we can modify them, and not, like our staff could probably do most of the modifications for not too much cost, and we'll have fully ADA compliant bathrooms, so, we are, we're, we're working on that at the town hall. The property on Farmington Avenue is being surveyed, prior to being appraised, the draft purchase and sale agreement is, is already been before the Duport Group, but, once we get the appraisal, we'll be able to insert some numbers, and we'll, and at that point, we'll bring that to the town council for the review and approval. And the last thing is a reminder, the Connecticut, the Central Connecticut workshop, about the Central Connecticut workshop on February twenty-second, twenty-third, twenty-third, it's going to be at the Sheraton Rocky Hill, it's going to focus on drug issues, I know I've attended it, I've attended at least one time previously, it's a, it's a good program, and I know that they would appreciate it if, if you would come.
Thank you. Next is our...
Yeah. Because I have no life, I read the auditors' report and the annual report. And they came up with five pages of recommendations.
Yes.
Are we progressing on these?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Maybe you could include that in your points next month?
Yep, I can do that.
Thanks.
Okay. Just give me a second here. So, special committee reports, we had our, I'll let you write that, so we had our ordinance committee, most, a bunch of us were there, we have to reconvene the ordinance committee, right, we talked about the leash, leash law, dogs in parks, different issues with dogs, and, so we'll go ahead and, I think we're waiting, right, you were looking up some statistics, and there's some things for our next meeting, right, then we looked at the tax ordinance, we're still looking at that, what's the other?
Couple of things, we, we ironed out, we said, the wording on the building, the building department, we're just changing, we're going to just, with the fee, so we'll take care of that.
Yes, we took care of that.
So, the other ones that we're doing some research on, and, and we're going to present those, I thought that I, I don't know that we're ready to set a date for that, I'd like to be able to send you, send you like a, a package update, with the updates on that, and then at the next meeting, maybe we can set the date for, for the next ordinance committee meeting.
Everywhere, I hope, sometime.
I would say right after, in fact, if you want to set the date, we could, we could set it now, and I just, and I have the package for you at the next town council meeting.
Yeah, if you want to, sure.
You want to have it through Tuesday after the town council meeting?
Sure.
May I share something about the ordinance committee?
Yes.
Is that all right?
Yes.
So, after the ordinance committee, I did reach out to the Chair of the Conservation Commission, specifically about the leash law, and...
So we want to talk to them, yeah.
Yeah, and as a former member of that commission, the issue had come up to us many times on Conservation Commission, and at the time, we had said, we don't mind having a leash law, we definitely don't. I spoke with Mike, and Michael DiLorenzo shared that it's fine for me to share with you, that the commission has no, up, up, what's the word?
Objection?
Objection, thank you.
Nope.
Of having a leash law in the parks.
Okay.
Specifically Bicentennial Park. The other thing that he did share is that he did not feel that a discussion about having a dog park at Bicentennial Park should, you know, there would be a long time before anything like that could be enacted, and he thought there might be more suitable places that are more central in town with easier access, and I'm sure Betsy would agree, in having a dog park at Bicentennial Park. So I just wanted to share.
Yeah, that's good, yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't think it needs to be there, it could be anywhere, wherever we think it has to go, if we do think it has to go there.
But I just felt that he needed to know, and we spoke on this past weekend, so...
Appreciate that, good to know, so we'll include that in our next discussion.
I didn't bring my calendar, but I would say the meeting, if you can have it Tuesday after your meeting.
Okay. Would be...
The twelfth?
That makes sense.
The twelfth, because the fifth is the first Tuesday.
Okay, so if we could have it the twelfth, that would be good, we could have all the information, you on the fifth, you can review it from the twelfth.
Yeah, okay.
Any other time?
Six-thirty?
Yeah.
Okay. Everybody can make that one, the twelfth?
The twelfth.
Six-thirty? Six-thirty is good? That's, that's a Tuesday, right?
Yep.
Tuesday, yeah.
Oh.
Okay, great.
I'll let you know.
All right, we could change it, Peter, let us know. All right, so, all right, so that's, I don't think there are any other special committees?
No.
Okay, so, council communications, what do we got?
Just like a, going record, thank the Public Works Department, they did a great job with the storm, I plowed snow for many years, I know how hard it is, it was a very hard storm, the manager wasn't like just plowing snow, and anybody driven from Berlin to the surrounding towns, our roads look much better from what I saw today. Want to make a note to do their great job.
Thanks, all of them, no.
I have a question for you, Jack. It's my understanding that that audio tape came to the attention of you, or somebody at the helm, a while ago, and I'm just wondering why it was never brought to the council, and why we had to learn from the local media?
I don't know, I, I can't, I can't discuss that, I know. It's under investigation.
So I guess my question is, and I know you can't discuss it, but when an issue comes, something like this, could not be discussed in an executive session?
It depends, I mean, executive sessions by statute are limited to a few topics, right? Personnel, which means the performance, evaluation of an existing employee, or potential hiring or termination of an employee, and, you know, other very specific matters that are in the statute, this doesn't really fall under any of those headings, there's no claim, there's no claim or pending or threatened litigation against the town.
When did the investigation start? Was it under investigation at that time that it was brought to you?
Can I talk with you? Can I just talk with you?
Sure.
Sure.
Let's, uh...
You want to take a five-minute recess?
Yes, let's take a five-minute recess, all those in favor, aye. All right, we'll be five minutes.
I gotta raise Charlie.
Oh. Oh, wow, so, hurry up, Peter. That's all right, Peter, if you got to go, you got to go, it's all right, all right, all right, we're back.
I apologize. I will apologize for being that cryptic. I was not presented with the tape, when I was told about the tape, and the, and the way it was worded to me, I contacted the police, oh, one minute after I was told about it. I was not given the tape.
Okay. But you didn't think that maybe the council should be apprised of it? Because this is a commissioner?
An elected official.
I mean, I can, I can tell you what, I mean, it's a little unusual to have an attorney-client discussion in public session, but I don't mind telling you that Jack contacted me, we didn't, at least I didn't know who the commissioner was, I didn't hear a tape, there was no tape that was provided to Jack or to me, so the context that it was presented in justified Jack going to the PD and turning it over to the PD for an investigation, that was my judgment. There was no mention of a name of a commissioner, there was no tape, there was no recording, there was no transcript, there was no information that I could do anything about, so my recommendation was to go to law enforcement and let them handle it.
Okay, understood, but I, I still believe that regardless of whether we don't have a name, just the mere fact that this is a commissioner, that is in Berlin, within our purview, that, that it should be something that the council is aware of, in whatever regard, just so that we, when this type of thing arises, that we're not kind of blindsided, and that we are learning from the local media and not...
You know, I guess if, I, I can't be quiet anymore, I guess, you know, if there's an investigation going on, whether it's the police department or the state's attorney's office, it, it, it's not public, it's not for public knowledge, I, I mean, it's, I don't...
Isn't that, I wasn't talking?
No, but, but, but I mean, if, if someone went to the newspaper outside of the official channels, that's what they did, and that appears to be what, you know, what I read in the paper, is someone went to the newspaper on their own, with whatever they brought forward, I think there, isn't there a comment in the first article about the state's attorney's office not making any comment? So, again, you know...
I, I understand.
Everyone has left, but...
I see what you're saying.
Yeah, so I mean, you can't...
I'm not talking about public consumption, I'm just talking about this being...
It can't go in...
The council should have been apprised.
No, it can't go anywhere.
Well...
No, I mean, that's just...
It's very surprising to me. It's very surprising to me.
That is pure police procedure, and if it's an investigation, that sense of a sensitive nature, it's not for anybody's consumption, and that's by the request of, you know, whether it's a prosecutor, or whether it's a police department, or whether it's the chief state's attorney, or whoever it might be, so. This is not unusual. This is everyday practice in, you know, in the law enforcement world, but, which, again, you know, people, the audience has left, and, you know, we have some time to reflect upon some of the comments, and we're talking about, and no disrespect, Charlie, to the press here, but we're talking about a newspaper article. We don't have any facts, we don't have any, we have a recording, and, you know, it is what it is. Don't know if it's true, don't know if it's doctor, don't know anything. And yes, we all agree, of course, that recording, the speech was horrible, reprehensible, not anything we condone anywhere in Berlin, but, you know, without all the facts, I just, it's amazing today, and it goes on every day on social media, on the newspaper, wherever. Somebody says a statement, it's the truth, I guess. If it's in the newspaper, we read it, and it's true, so, you know, and then, I'm sorry for people to stand, and I'll say it in the next council meeting too, and I'll say it to you, Charlie, after, happy to talk to you after. Some of the people tonight that stood up here and talked about cooperation, they better look in the mirror, because I don't appreciate them using, you know, using this as an opportunity to bring up things that just are ridiculous and not true, and things that they have perpetrated in this town for the last year or two. And it's disgusting to me that they're using this horrible situation to bring some type of political discussion in which it has nothing to do with a political discussion. RDs, I don't care who it is, me, anyone else. So, you know, I'm disgusted with the whole thing. The speech, of course, nobody condones that. We know our police department is not prejudiced, and we know, we don't condone that in Berlin, we all know that. But to stand up here and use that as some other political discussion is disgusting, quite frankly. And some people should look in the mirror before they stand up here at that podium and throw stones at some of us sitting up here. That's all I'll say, because I'll regret the rest of it, but it's just so wrong. That's all I have.
I'll try to make my point quick. I'm still trying to play catch-up on some of this. I was out of the country last week, and I had no email and no cell phone, so when I came back on midnight on Friday night, and had a furnace that was out, I had to deal with that. Lucky it wasn't the last couple of days. I have hundreds, if not a thousand emails still flowing through through work, and people asking me if I saw this, and I'm still shocked. I mean, I've only known Bob Peters for five, six years since I've been on the BRTC, and those comments are so out of character, it's just shocking. And those comments were shocking, and they were reprehensible, and I don't condone that kind of behavior. It's just, you know, surprising to me. And, you know, I'm still trying to gather my thoughts on how to respond to that, but it's just, it was really surprising. I don't know what else to say, you know?
What else? Comments?
I have a couple.
Yes.
So the first thing I want to, I actually have two very short. With the golf commission, last week at the ordinance committee, they came before us and they were talking about, you know, whether or not they would need to enact that 4% increase because of the ordinance. And what was said was, is it an asset or is it a business? I didn't really say anything that night because I'm not a member of the ordinance committee. I did say other things, but I just have to say tonight, it is an asset to the town, but it should be treated like a business. And we shouldn't go into the year knowing that we're going to come and not, you know, pull out a profit. And that's why I had some questions tonight about giving the free rounds of golf. So I do think I wanted to be heard, I wanted it on the record, I feel we, you know, it's part of what we have to do every day, and take a hard line sometimes on different things, just as we're doing with some of the other budgets. That was one thing. And then the other thing is, considering the talk that we're having, I know tonight we pushed aside the ethics committee nominations, and I was planning on saying it if this came up, but I do hope that you can speak to Mr. Vili and ask him to pull his nomination, because anybody who flies a Confederate flag and posts it on Facebook should not be part of our ethics committee here in Berlin. So I do hope you're able to do that.
Anyone else? I'll just end with, they want to talk about leadership? They want to talk about leadership? Leadership is you don't jump to conclusions, and leadership, you don't use something like this reprehensible to make a political statement, and that's what I see many leaders in our town doing, maybe in both parties on certain occasions. And we're not here for that. I'm not here for that. I never have been. I don't think anyone up here is here for that, so. I'm thoroughly, I'm as disgusted with some of the comments I heard tonight as what comments were in the paper about, you know, what was possibly said by this gentleman, you know, but we still don't have all the facts, but just to jump on this and take it down the road where they took it tonight, they being members of the public, they have the right to speak, they certainly do, and we certainly have a right to respond, and it takes a while for it to sink in, but I think they just went down a bad road. They want to talk about cooperation, that is not the first step, what I heard tonight from many people, former council members, you know, or the finance members. That's not the road to cooperation, not in any way or means.
I don't think Kristen, as a former council member, said anything that was...
No, I'm just saying who spoke. I'm just saying the people that spoke, yeah. I'm not pointing out fingers at anybody, I'm just saying, if you take the general topic up there, it was like, well, you know, we don't cooperate, we don't do this, we don't do this, we didn't take a leadership role in this.
Maybe one or two people spoke, maybe in that regard.
Yes.
But I think that the people were actually pretty articulate and...
With not no...
No exceptions, no question.
Yes, well...
And Mark?
Yes.
I would have said this to you if this had come to us, we, this was there at our last council meeting.
Yeah, that, I'm not talking about that.
I would have said that to you then. He doesn't belong on the ethics.
I hear you. But, again, you know, if you want to cooperate, there's better ways than to stand in some public forum and throw stones at people. That's not the way to cooperate, as far as I'm concerned. The town needs to go down a better road than that, so, anyway. Enough, enough said, I'm sorry, it's disturbing, the whole thing is disturbing, certainly starting with the language we heard, no question. Okay, where are we at now? Minutes, yes, go ahead.
Make a motion, accept the minutes from January 8th, 2019.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those so moved?
Yes.
Now we have to move into our executive session, so...
Okay, motion to move into executive session for real estate. Can I get General State Statute, Section 1-206D, discussion of the selection of a site, sale, or purchase of real estate by the town. Kensington Road, number two, personnel matters, Connecticut General State Statute, Section 1-206A, concerning the employment, employment performance evaluation of a public employee, Jack Healy.